Want to call the East Greenwood Central School District Education Meeting to order. The savings attendance, we have Ms. Kennedy, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Mann, myself, and Mr. Steinbeck. And Ms. O'Brien will be a little bit late, so we expect her about 7:30. With that, could you please rise and join me with a pledge of allegiance? Thank you, everyone. So first order of business, we have our Columbia High School Student Council, Emma Van Roen here.
Good evening. We just finished our biggest events of the fall, pep rally, sphere week, and homecoming. This was our first homecoming in three years without COVID restrictions, and students were very excited to be able to participate in one of their favorite events of the year. On behalf of the student body and student council, I'd like to thank Mr. Simons, the board, and all the staff for their support in having these events.
Now that we're done with our busiest month, we were able to get back to more of our regular business. Since it is already mid-October, we had a quick meeting today to work out our events and fundraisers for the upcoming weeks. Next week, we're holding our first pop-up sale, selling pink t-shirts to raise money for breast cancer research and charities. We will be also painting the school pink, which involves decorating the lobby with pink decorations on Monday.
And finally, our annual blood drive will be held on November 2nd this year. Students 16 and 17 years old with parent permission and 18-year-old students are eligible to participate. And that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the presentation from our principal of the Donald P. Sullivan School, Mr. Jack Calvi, and I want to thank him and his team for hosting this evening and as well as for the refreshments and the tour of the pre-K, the classrooms, and some of the new areas of the building. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biono. I want to welcome our members of our Board of Education, our central administrators, my colleagues, thank you, Peter, all of our guests. I want to thank our PTO as well for the refreshments that they provided for our meeting this evening. Tonight, our presentation, one, we're honored to be the first school to host the Board of Education meeting. It's nice to have everyone back here at DPS. Last time we were in the gym when we did our dedication for our turf in the gym. What we want to talk to the board about is a couple of things that are new here at DPS. The first thing that we want to talk about is we've established a new committee. It's called our recess committee. And these are the members of our committee, Sue D'Amico, Jen Ready, Tanya Maxstadt, Lisa Reyno, Beth Hart, Karen Treber, Heather DiOrio, Chandra Conyers, Sarah Tacey, and myself. We're also going to talk a little bit about some of the changes we've made to our character education program. I want to recognize those members as well, Sue D'Amico, Heather Zecolo, Tanya Maxstadt, Lisa Reyno, Allison Flynn, Heather DiOrio, Ashley McCoy, Peg O'Connor, and myself are on that committee. Our recess committee, the rationale why we put this committee together is, you know, we came to the closure of the pandemic. Our team expressed an interest in evaluating and making adjustments to our recess time for our students. We've observed a change in their level of student engagement while they're at recess. You know, some of the things that we attribute that to are some of the protocols we've had in place. You know, we've been six feet apart, you know, everyone's facing in one direction. So there were the health and safety protocols. Also, the amount of technology students are engaged with, you know, there's the increased usage of technology, and our kids have limited amount of time to play. So based on our observations and our engagement with students, we've seen that they've had a challenging time with just some social interactions with their peers, the ability to problem solve, and to engage in and initiate play. You know, the things I think that, you know, we take for granted on how to start to play or how to get yourself involved in a game, you know, we were seeing our kids aren't quite sure how to do that. And so there were some things that we started to meet together to try to remedy that for our boys and girls here at DPS. We established a mission statement as our team. That our school recess committee represents a various group of stakeholders within our school community, and our mission is really to create a safe, engaging, and cooperative environment for the students during our recess periods. We listed out a bunch of objectives that we wanted to reflect upon our current practices, determine areas where we are successful, but also look at areas that we need to adjust, discuss the student needs based on observations from previous and our current school year. And then what we wanted to do was to establish a timeline for short and long-term plan for our students that promote positive student social interactions, engage students in more meaningful and positive play, provide students with problem-solving strategies that are needed during our recess or play opportunities, and identify age-appropriate resources, because what may work in fifth grade is probably not going to always work, you know, with our younger friends. So it's finding those resources, so it is a more meaningful recess time for our boys and girls. Look at potential funding streams to be able to get those resources to support our program. And one of the big things that we really want to do is we want to utilize our student leaders. And we've already started to do that, and I can't wait to show you one of the things that we've done to model and support our overall plan. And also, we want to make sure we're communicating our plan to all of our stakeholders that are part of our school community. We talked about this last night at our PTO meeting, so we're getting that information out to the boys and girls, our team here at DPS, and as well as our parent groups. Our immediate goals are really to create, one of the things is to create universal rules. One of the things that we've observed last year, we've got four square in our backyard or side yard. And we saw that if you're with one group, there'd be one set of rules, and you go to another group, there's another set of rules. So we thought it was important that as we move forward with our group, we start to establish, this is the way we do it here at DPS. That way, we're consistent. So, Peter, can you click on that link? I don't know if I can do that right from here. You see that? Thank you. And this is how we really utilize our student leaders. I want to thank Mrs. O'Connor. She put the video together for us. A little over dramatic with that one. Peter, you can cut that. Thank you. The one thing that we really like about this is we're taking our fifth grade, who at the beginning of the school year always charged with being the leaders of our school, and Mrs. D'Amico runs our student council, so they're highly involved, and we look to them to be the leaders of our school. A couple of things, we had our first character education assembly this past Friday. We showed this video to the entire school, and the kids were glued. They were glued onto the screen. I think this will be successful, and that's so, I think, getting the rules out there to all of our teams. But I think when we do videos like that, if I'm a fifth-grade student and I see I'm starring in a movie at school, I mean, that's pretty empowering, and we're giving ownership to the kids. If I'm a student sitting in the audience, I'm like, I want to be that, I want to be that kid, you know, who's up there on the screen. One of the pieces that I want to commend is the student, one of our students, Bella, who called herself out, right, on a play. And to me, that's one of the things that we see, you know, is sometimes, ah, I'm not out. But, you know, she owned it. And, you know, when we talk about the character trait of integrity, she demonstrated that. So it all really fits into the things that we're trying to do as a school community, as well as come up with some commonality. Mrs. D'Amico, anything you want to add from our leadership role in the fifth grade? You good? Okay, all right, all right. So again, it's utilizing our student leaders, not only for the demonstration and the teaching. They're going to go into classes if need be to execute all this, but to also provide us feedback, you know, to make sure we're providing the right resources to our students. We're going to continue to identify small and whole group games or opportunities for all seasons, because we know right now our season is running out, where we, you know, we're going to transition to winter. So it's coming up with those ideas and resources for winter, and then transition back to the spring. Storage plan, how are we going to store all of our resources? And we also want to develop and create some social scripts for our students when they get stuck. You know, sometimes our kiddos, they get stuck in situations where they don't know how to respond to a student or how to engage. So it's providing them those scripts and modeling that, both in the classroom and as peers with one, you know, with one another. So these are all things that we're working on. You know, we're going to continue to monitor our recess time and engage with the students as they play, and also identify those students who may not be engaged in play. You know, it's, you know, when we think about, we don't, we want all of our students to have some level of engagement. So it's being observant for those boys and girls who may not be as engaged and identifying, what is it that would interest you? Maybe they want to read book, maybe they want to color outside. It's hearing from our students and how we can best serve them during that time to make it meaningful for them. So we're going to transition to the component of our character education program. A couple of things that we've done this year is, right behind Mr. Biono and Mr. Simons and Mr. Stiles, this is our new flag for the 2022-2023 school year. Every year in the spring, and it has always gone along with the budget vote, we have students create a flag, and we have our character committee, and we determine finalists. The kids go into a voting booth. We got the voting booth back last year with COVID. We were doing, we were doing, based on using Google to do our school-wide votes. And the boys and girls go into a voting booth and determine who is our winner for our flag for the next school year. This is our 13th year doing that, and this flag was designed by now a sixth grader, Kishmala Sabzada. And her family brought Kishmala back to our assembly on Friday, and we had a big unveiling. Peter, can you hit the link right there, just so we can see the unveiling? It's there. There's definitely one who's very excited about this. So former DPS student now at Goth Middle School came back to unveil her flag. Peter, we can pause it. We, thank you. But what was nice about doing this this past Friday, it was a true indication we were back. We had families in the audience, we had our kids, we were singing our school song. We're in proximity to one another, just like the good old days. So it was, it was really nice. So that was one component of our character education program that we did. We have two new features of our character program, and I know you're probably all mesmerized when you came in and saw, wow, look at this 14-karat gold lunch tray and trash can. So this year, what we've done is we have the golden lunch tray, and we have the golden trash can. One of the things we're really trying to encourage is the concept of teamwork and taking responsibility. And so the golden lunch tray is a classroom recognition for the classroom that keeps their area in the cafeteria nice and clean. They're doing a great job following all the rules and expectations and procedures of our cafeteria. And so our second-grade class, Mrs. Van Roy's class, received this this past Friday, and it was like they won the gold medal, and they all came up as a class and, you know, celebrated. And they'll receive a class party for that recognition. And then we have the golden trash can, and so this goes to the classroom that keeps their room nice and tidy and well organized, making our custodians' lives a little bit easier. And this here to help make our cafeteria monitors' lives a little bit easier. And so Ms. Callahan's fourth-grade class won the golden trash can. And what's nice about this is that it really brings us together as a school community. The kids were very excited to see who received it, but it involves our cafeteria monitors as a part of our character education program and our custodians. But it's providing another opportunity for our students to take on responsibility. You know, we want them to treat our facility, our cafeteria, like it's their dining room table at home or their kitchen table at home, or when they're in their, when they're at their house, you know, they're cleaning up after themselves. The parents thought that was pretty funny when I said that at the assembly. So, you know, we laid some good groundwork for the parents at home, too, in terms of the things that the kids can do to help support, especially after dinner. So we introduced that this past week. One of the initiatives we really want to talk about, and I want to thank all of our team that's here this evening, is this past school year, we began a One Book, One School initiative that tied into our character education program, and we're going to continue that this school year as well with some new texts. But I'm going to turn it over to Tanya Maxstadt and Peg O'Connor, who are a part of our character education team and did a phenomenal job initiating this for our school this past school year and for our upcoming school year. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So for our first book that we chose last year, we chose the book Each Kindness, with which Mrs. O'Connor is holding up. And we chose this book because it's about a little girl who is not very kind to a new student in her class. And the new student keeps trying to be friends, and this little girl is just not very kind to her, just ignores her and says unkind things. And then the teacher does an activity where they have to, the little girl, let me backtrack. The little girl ends up moving, and before anybody can say goodbye to her. So the teacher tells them that she has left, and the teacher does an activity where they take a stone, and they throw it into the water, and the rippling of the water represents each kindness. It goes on and on and on. But if you don't throw a stone in, there is no ripples. If you give no kindness, then nothing can ripple and go on and on and on. So we really liked this book. It really demonstrated that each kindness you do or you do not do can have an impact on others. So the pictures up here show the pond that we put in the lobby so that the entire school read this book on the same day. We did the activity on the same day, and we all brought them down and put them into our own pond. And on the stones, the children had to write an act of kindness that they did or could do for someone. And these are the pictures of the kids putting up their stones, putting them into the pond. And we talked a lot about how that kindness will ripple and continue, and your words really matter. And there's another picture, Each Kindness. And the kids really enjoyed it. They loved reading each other's and having them up there to show them. And the kids would walk by and just stop and read them and reflect, and we talked about this book a lot. It played in nicely with our character ed. And there's the next one coming up.
This one is one we did in the spring after the fall. It's by Dan Santat, and it's a play on Humpty Dumpty. And our theme for that month had been perseverance, and this story really plays to that character trait. He fell off the wall. What does he do next? And again, we chose a day where every classroom read the book at the same time, and then they did the activity. Our fabulous Mrs. Oswald, our teacher, put up a brick wall in the hallway, and the students put their Humpty Dumpty and their, what they did, how they persevered at one point in their life up on the wall. And again, just like with the pond, it was a real focal point where the kids would stop and look and read what everyone had done. And it was, it's very powerful to see from fifth grade to kindergarten doing the same thing and having, being able to share what they've done with each other. And there's some of the pictures, and that's the finished wall. And that was the quote from the story, "Life begins after you get back up."
All right, so for this year, we have picked three new titles, and Peggy's going to talk about the first one.
In December, we're doing compassion as our character trait for the month, and the book Maddie's Fridge is one we've chosen to do. It's a beautiful story about two girls who are friends at school. One is great at climbing the rock wall, the other is not. The other girl is, her family is not very wealthy, and her friend finds out when she looks in her fridge. So the girl is trying to help, but no, she can't do it herself, and ends up talking to her family, and how can they help? And it's another beautiful story. We're going to, we think, have a food drive in December to show compassion as a school. And again, we'll read the book out at the same time and talk about that project that we'll do together.
The next book that we chose to do is Adrian Simcox Does Not Have a Horse. And this is a lovely story about a little boy who says at school that he's got this wonderful horse, and he really doesn't have a horse. He doesn't have much of anything. And this little girl shouts and tells everybody, "He doesn't have a horse. I know he doesn't have a horse," and kind of embarrasses him. And then her mother decides to take her for a walk to see where Simon lives, and she realizes that she made a big mistake and that he has a wonderful imagination. And she realizes that, you know, just because he doesn't have a lot, just don't crush someone's dreams and let them have that. And it's just a wonderful story about tolerance and being compassionate. So we chose that for February. And then we're going to end the year with a good one.
The Bad Seed.
Yeah, we have a prop here. This we're doing for the character trait of courage, because the bad seed is just bad, 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 and he loves being bad. And then he realizes at the end that, you know what, I don't really like being bad anymore, and he has to have the courage to change. And that's something we talk about all the time with kids, is, you know, you might have been like this at one point, but you can change anytime you want. It's a new year. It's, anytime you want to change, you can change. So this was a really good one to show courage, and the kids love this book. And everybody, I think, in the whole school has read this book, so we're excited to do it with them again for Character Ed. And those are our One Book, One School.
Thank you, Tanya and Peg, and I want to thank members of our character education committee. I also want to, special thanks to our PTO for their support and donations for our One Book, One School program, as well as all that they do to give for our character education program, and as we talked last night, be a part of our recess initiative. I also want to thank our team here at DPS for supporting all of these initiatives and making them to come to fruition. It requires all of us, you know, and it really is a team effort to make that happen. I want to thank again our character education and recess committee for their continued work. I also want to thank our school district and the Board of Ed for continuing to put social, emotional development and learning as a key goal for our students in the school district. You know, whether we're, you know, with coming off of the pandemic and just, you know, seeing where our kiddos are at, I think always, you know, being reflective of where they are as children is so important. And happy learners are going to be good learners. So we appreciate everyone's time tonight, and thank you again for providing this forum to be able to share all the great things that we're doing, not only here at DPS, but all the schools throughout our school district. Thank you. And if anyone has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments? I think you wound them, Jack. Just want to thank you for the presentation, you know, the things that you're doing here at the school and the things that we're doing across our district to make those transitions back to a more normal environment. And the things you're doing here at DPS are wonderful. You have a great team, and we want to thank you for all the things you're doing for our families and kids and the creative ideas, the books, and just wonderful to see that, the things that you're doing here. So it's a great place. Proud to be here. Anyone else? Last chance. All right. Thank you again, and we're going to move on with our agenda. Next order of business is the minutes from 9:28. Any corrections, revisions to the minutes? Seeing none, you wish to approve that? Anyone? John, second. Emily, all those in favor? Approved. Next, we'll move to our board forum, an opportunity for board members to make any comments they want. I'll start at my right with Emily. Anything? Okay. Jennifer? Mark? John?
I would re-miss to not have a comment. Jack, how long has it been since we've been here?
Long time, 18 years.
Yeah.
Oh, how long since the last one? Let's see, last New Year. I did buy an Acrolyche last year.
Okay. So for those of you who don't understand, I've been taking it on the chin over the Yankees-Red Sox wager for many years. And I believe that he was glad that we did come here for a while, because he probably didn't want to face me, and he probably wished that he had COVID today, because he didn't want to hear that his favorite team today is the New York Yankees. How's it feel, Mark?
It's good. It's great. Awesome.
I did watch last.
Okay, good. We love a good sport. On a serious note, we always love coming here. I love heckling you. His only good saber is he is a Dolphins fan, and I'm a Dolphins fan, so I'll keep him around for a while. Great things out here. It is really good to be back. I can tell you, the challenge of being on the board through these times is not being in person as well. It becomes tiresome and not so engaging. And I'm glad that we were here first, and you're doing great things, and I really like the direction you're going in and going in.
Thanks, John. Cheryl? Just a final comment again. I mentioned we had an earlier tour of the building and the pre-K classroom. I want to thank the district and the staff for making that a realization and working with Questar as a provider to make the pre-K program successful here, as it is across the district. And our opportunities for our students and our families to take advantage of that opportunity to get an early start in their education, because most of the kids, Jack, or you said, are from this community. So next year, they'll be here. So that's awesome. So thank you again. So we'll move to the public forum, residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District. They address the board on matters concerning programs and They address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns in the public forum. If response is appropriate, the president or superintendent will contact the individual near future. Those persons who wish to address the board will be recognized with a chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protection, it must be stressed that visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. Any, in addition, any remarks which be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be declared out of order. All comments should be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? No one? Okay. We'll now move to the reports and presentations of superintendent, Mr. Simons.
Thank you, Mr. Puno. I hope everyone can hear me. Can you hear me okay? Pretty good. So I'm privileged this evening to ask the board to recognize Mark Adam. Mark Adam is the district's public information specialist. Recently, it was announced that the New York School Public Relations Association has recognized Mark's work for three examples of excellent writing. Mark has received statewide recognition for the communication stories that he has done in the district. He received excellence in writing awards for a story that he did on our new clay target team, Shooting for Success. Second story that he received recognition for excellence in writing, elementary students show growth in reading and math on mid-year assessments. And also a story that he did on our website regarding new mental health satellite clinic opening at Gulf Middle School. Mark does a terrific job. He always has done a terrific job for the district, particularly during the pandemic, as we've relied more on electronic communications. The, the, the work of Mark Adam has been extraordinary. Additionally, I just want to thank him. He has rolled out a new initiative. He's the key leader on our transition to Parents Square. So at this time, because of all the great work that Mark Adam does on behalf of the district, I'd like him to come up and see, receive a recognition certificate from our Board of Education. Congratulations, Mark Adam.
Got a picture, Peter? Mark's probably used to taking the pictures right away. And now his tables are turned a little bit. So that's wonderful.
He's going to do a selfie with you.
Selfie with everybody? Nice. So Mark, how many years have you been with the district now? Seven and a half. So we've seen so much good work come out of the the office and the work that you've done in supporting and demonstrating that this district all the wonderful things are happening across the district and the community. And people like yourself who help us to get that message out to our families, it's much appreciated. And just congratulations on the awards. You're welcome. So, yeah. I would be remiss too, if our, I know our PTO has some refreshments. So if people need to get anything, there's donuts and stuff like that. So I already grabbed mine. I may grab the second one in a little bit, but just coffee and, and some refreshments for folks. So it's, it's, if you feel like you want to get something, feel free to do that. I know it's there for, for everyone. So thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is the, the draft board annual agenda calendar. This was something that board member requested and Jeff and the team have put together just kind of a calendar that we can see some of the regular items that occur. So Jeff, Linda, turn it over to you.
Mr. Mann has brought forward a request to provide the board with a planning calendar that outlines and specifies various types of reports as well as actions that the board takes on a regular basis. So our central office team, with the help of our clerical staff, took a look at everything that was done over the course of the last few years on board docs. But also we took a look at state obligations and things that were required, recurring obligations that have to come to the board. So this calendar represents those things that topics, reports, items that the board sees each year annually. The determinations regarding which month they fall in are sometimes driven by state regulations, other times than discretionary. So if everyone wants to just take a look at the items that are there. One of the things I pointed out in my written communication to the board is sometimes we only have one meeting in August, then we want to be mindful of the time meetings of the board. So we could easily shift some of those items in August to September. But basically, this is, this is everything we've done reflected in board docs, but also reflected by state requirements. It doesn't mean there wouldn't be other things on the board agenda. These are the things that are generally required to be on the board agenda.
Is this going to capture Mark with kind of your thoughts about what we were thinking of?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Good.
I can shoot out an email, a couple of the things that we've spoken about.
Okay. Yeah. If there's some things that you see on here, if you're looking it over and if it's a draft. This kind of gives us a heads up as things come on the agenda. Because a lot of times the, the board agendas come out and the required notice, three, four days in advance. This gives board members a chance to say, oh, this is going to be on here. I can prepare. Or if you're going to miss a meeting or something like that, or want to attend something, make arrangements, like for example, if there's something in terms of recognition for staff or other activities. I mean, some of these are kind of a little dry in terms of reports, but you know, the things that you want to be here for. It's just, and we can add to this calendar too. Well, thank you for putting that together. And if you want to give feedback to the Mr. Simons and the team, Linda, they can, they can probably.
Have anything or shift things around?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, I brought them, Mr. Simons, this list this year, especially in August, we, we did shift things to September. Great. Thank you. The next discussion item is capital project considerations, Sir Simons.
Yes, we have been discussing the current capital project as well as information that we are starting to prepare for a future capital project. And as we move towards the completion of the capital construction work that was voted on in 2017, we hope to be able to wrap the entire project up by the end of next summer. One of the things we have to do periodically is make sure that we are reviewing our costs that have been incurred within the project. Previously, we reported to the board that there were favorable conditions which enabled the district to do other work that, because of the budget permitting more items to be addressed. We have approximately $745,000 remaining in the authorized 2017 project. One point we had talked about, and that, that estimate includes the cost of the smoke and fire alarm system at the high school already being taken care of in terms of the bids that would be approved this evening. So it leaves us with $745,000. And we had some items that we had looked at, perhaps wanting to do, including replacement of the tennis courts. Our architect put together some estimates that the tennis courts at the high school, which are in need of replacement, cost between $900,000 and $1 million, observatively. We've also talked about the timelines required of SED to approve various projects. There's the design that the architects have to put together for any type of scope of work. And then there's the SED approval process, which has been pretty delayed. We're recommending that we use the $745,000 to replace the playgrounds at Red Mill and at Janay because we've identified through some reviews that were done last year that those are the two playgrounds that really need to be replaced. We chose that option to recommend to the board because it fits within the $745,000. It's about $350,000 per, per building. The, the design is pretty simple. It involves the vendor working with each building to submit information regarding the design. It would not take as long for that process of approval to occur with the playgrounds. And we believe we can get it done and completed next summer. And that would be the completion of the 2017 project. So we're recommending doing the playgrounds now and some of the other work that we've identified, we'll go into the Hopper with the building condition survey for the next project. And we'd be able to wrap this project up and address two playgrounds for, for two of our larger schools. Ask Mrs. Wagner if she has anything she wants to add.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. No, I think you covered it. And the vendor for the playgrounds is Architects. And so they are known for designing and installing playgrounds at elementary schools. So and they are on state contract, which also saves time.
I think that's the biggest thing is the project timeline in terms of building aid. It's critical. And based on the delays we saw over the last several years for other projects, we don't want to jeopardize that, anything there. And I think, to me, the playground projects or community use projects, there's a lot of activity, a lot of use from our community in off school hours as well. And I think it's really, would benefit those two locations to have, have the playgrounds redone. Any, any other comments about the recommendation?
Yeah, we'd like to add that the facilities department is looking into purchasing swings for all of the playgrounds right now. So the other playgrounds that are not included here will receive new swings this year.
Great.
We would want the architect, architects, our facilities, director Paul Bickel to work with the principals and a committee from each building to pick out the, pick out the playground design. Done that in the past. I think it
Would that include the parents?
And the parents on the PTO. We give you basically a general financial parameter. You work with a consultant on some things that you'd like to see on the playground and you come back with some information for us to look at central office. We'd recommend the design to the board.
So realistically, when would all that have to take place in this issue to propose to get done work in the summer?
Do you know the answer to that, Linda? How long would it, well, realistically, when does the design have to be picked out and submitted to get the work done next summer?
Well, we will start, we will start the process right away contacting Architects. And then we would expect by the springtime to make sure that we have all of the plans ready to go so that we can start the work in the summer.
All right. Anyone else?
I'd like to ask them. How did you pick Red Mill and Janay? Are these the oldest playground structures? I mean, the pictures really, you know, show that they need.
I don't know if they're necessarily the oldest. They may be, but they are in the worst state of repair. And in some cases, the levels of repairs can't really be done. They just need to be replaced. So it's really the Questar, Bosse's did a review of the conditions of the playgrounds over a year ago. And then Architects did a supplemental review. And those two playgrounds were identified as the ones in the worst shape, to be honest.
Is there any way to look at bits and pieces of the other school playgrounds that need help? I know that there is a slide at Green Meadow that has had caution tape up for a really long time. I'm wondering if we could, maybe if there's, you know, any available funds to do certain patches.
We've been doing that on a kind of an ongoing basis through Mr. Bickel's work. There are some areas that on those reports that have already been addressed, that particular one, I can't comment on. Mr. Bickel, you want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing for those playgrounds that needed repairs and replacements?
Yep. So we started off with Architects reviewing the spring. The biggest thing that's standing out was the swings themselves. So we kind of want to do it to everything at once at each playground. So we decided, let's start with those planes. They're the biggest stages to prepare and also the could cause the most dangerous dangers. The metal on this give them a lot of chains. So we did price up, as Mrs. Wagner said, all new swing sets for the pair of districts. Depending on, you know, side, if neither star is great, that first car is a uniting Red Mill might be all off on those because just so you know, the total price for all swing sets swing replacements on all those five elementary schools, including the two playgrounds here, was about $26,000. And that's not installable prices.
So, so what we're talking about is broken slides or pieces of apparatus that may be able to be moved and replaced. Do we have a way of doing that? It depends on the model and the age, right?
That was going to be the next. We wanted to do the swing set for, we were going to think broken slide and things like that. We did budget a little bit extra this year, playground budget. So I don't know how to deal with it silently and work our way through that. So slides would be the next thing on the agenda. Good. Last, last year, we did playground loads on all the playgrounds. That was the biggest concern right off of them. Questar initially did theirs. That's really based on impact resistance. So we increased them to the proper depth of the fire. So that was that stage on the stage two, looking at swings. And stage three, we were going to go this line, plastic pieces and so on. Kind of had to work through it silently because there's just so much in the model. And you have to purchase the actual bars from the actual manufacturer. That's where the big cost comes in. You can't just purchase hand-built swings.
Everything's regulated, right, Mark? Everything's regulated and has to be replaced as usual. Yeah. Maybe I would suggest you can share that, that kind of stages that you're talking about or with to help us to see what, what kind of process and planning you're doing for those playground pieces. Okay?
That'd be great. Thanks.
The help from that memory?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep. Right. So I think move forward with the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the support.
We'll be gone to our regular business. First item is the approval of programs for residential disabilities. Any questions or comments on that? Need a motion to approve? Jennifer, in a second. John, all those in favor? Next one is the instructional contract with North Greenwood Common School. Any questions or comments there? Seeing none, any motion to approve that? Mark, second. Cheryl, all in favor? Approved. Next, we have two audit reports. The first one is the audit report and financial statements. Start maybe give a brief overview, Linda?
Thank you, Mr. Puno. Before we begin tonight, I would like to thank Mary Ridzi, who is our district treasurer and here with us this evening. And as well as the entire business office, because everyone is involved in this audit. I'd like to also thank Zachary Troxell, who is our new extra classroom treasurer this year. Joining us this evening is Mr. Tim Doyle from the Bonnadeo Group. He is, he's going to answer any questions you may have. He also brought along with him his daughter, who happens to be a DPS alum. So we welcome you as well. In your packet this evening, you have three items. The required communications letter, as well as the financial statements for the district and the financial statements for the extra classroom. The thing I would like to point out to everyone is that the purpose of the external independent audit is to express an opinion on whether the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position and the results of operations in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And this is very important because this is the auditor's opinion, which is an unmodified opinion. And that is considered the highest level of assurance that they present. In the required communications letter, it addresses several items. The first thing I'd like to point out is the significant audit matters. The district this year adopted, implemented GASB 87, which is accounting for leases. It also talks about in the required communication letters, if there are any difficulties in performing the audit, if there are any corrected or uncorrected misstatements, disagreements with management, of which there was none. In the financial statement, the large packet itself, there are certain sections to the financial statements. The first section is considered the management discussion and analysis. That is about nine pages long. And it just is, provides an overview of financial operations in a somewhat easy to read format. One thing I wanted to point out this year is that on page eight of the financial statements, there is an increase in the total net position of the district. That is primarily due to the amount of federal money we received through the Carissa and our funds. There are also graphs included in there. So you can see our major sources of revenue and expenditures. And I would like to note that this year on page 58, our unassigned fund balance our unassigned fund balance is below the four percent maximum as required by law. We are at three point nine seven percent. And so I will turn it over to Mr. Doyle to see if you have anything extra to add.
Sure, just briefly, I'll add a couple of things, but that was a great synopsis. I will say we've sent three kids through this school and two have made it all the way through and then we've got one in high school. It's a great school here, it's a great district. So thank you for for sending them on a good path. I would greatly appreciate it. Yeah, the only other things I would mention, as mentioned there, unmodified opinion, highest level assurance that the auditor can provide. We did not, we also issued in that report what's called a governmental auditing standards report. And that requires us to gain an understanding of the internal controls over your financial reporting and note whether there are any deficiencies in those controls that would not allow you to detect and or correct a material error or financial state or error or fraud in your financial statement. We noted no such material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. That's a good thing, very consistent with prior years. We also issued as part of that report, what's called your uniform guidance audit. That's where we do a federal compliance audit. And this year we tested the programs of your IDA special education programs as well as the the COVID funds. We noted no non-compliance that would be material to those programs and issued an unmodified opinion on your compliance with those programs. And then just lastly, we also issue a extra classroom report, which is under the cash basis. And that's required by SED each year to have a separate audit on your activities, your extra classroom activities. Again, unmodified opinion, very consistent with what you've had in prior years. No changes there. We would want to thank the the business office for all their assistance as well. Very busy year, a lot of things going on. You implemented GASB eighty-seven, which was a tough standard. And we're very thankful for for all of their efforts.
Any questions? Of the order, Linda?
It's not quite as exciting as four square or the gold lunch trade, but.
I was very interested in hearing the rules. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just a comment. Really that, you know, my nine years here and others have been here longer. The the district has always received very, very good reports and it's a testament to the folks here and that just the nature of our work is that we focus on the resources for kids, we make sure that we're proper funding levels and we plan for the future and things like long range planning and things like that. Everly benefited benefited us in the long term and also the, you know, what seeing the increases in foundation aid, seeing the use of our federal funds and that they're appropriate really has put the district in a really good financial position right now. We know things are a little unsettled right now in terms of the economy and we hope that we can either those things well, based on the condition of our our books, so to speak, for the future. So this budget year coming up will be interesting, but well, thank you for for going through there and supporting our team and and the work that you do. So appreciate it.
Mr. Pino, we do have a resolution to.
I'm on it, Linda. Okay. Need a motion to accept the auditors report? Emily, second? John, all those in favor? Approved. And we also have the second item D, internal audit reports for extra extra classroom payroll. Is that a separate conversation?
Yes, just quickly, we have our internal auditor every year is Michael Wolf. And he comes in and he reviews some of our procedures. So this is an internal audit that he did last year for the extra classroom accounts as well as payroll. The extra classroom account report is a three-year report because we had little activity for a couple of years during COVID. But you will see in this extra classroom report, he makes a couple of verbal recommendations to us as to help us control items. But this is a very good report that we have our controls in place and that their testing was was very positive. The payroll report was another area that he reviewed this past year. And we have, I want to remind to the board that we do have new employees in the office. And so this is a very positive report that our controls have stayed in place. He did testing on several employees. He made one recommendation to us, which he made a recommendation that required required us to file a corrective action plan with SED that's found at the end. There are, there are a couple of little items. One is that the subs that are hired by the district, he found that those employee files for the subs and the new employee, as they become a new employee, were not always consistently filed. Direct deposit forms were missing. And he had two employees where we didn't have supported I nines. He did note in this report that these were all employees that were hired prior to twenty twenty and we do have controls presently in place.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Linda on the internal audit report? See, done any motion to prove that? Cheryl, second, John, all those in favor? Approved. Next, we go to item E, which we have a withdrawal of the low bidder and then the acceptance of a new bid regarding the high school fire alarm. Any background you want to give? For Simon's or?
I'm going to rely on Linda for that one, too.
Sure. So back on September twenty first, we opened our bids for the fire alarm system at the high school. We had five bidders. The lowest bidder was B and D Industries. However, the following day, they contacted the district to withdraw, request to withdraw their bid because they had some mathematical errors in there and they would not be able to provide the work as is contracted. We went to the second bidder. The second bidder was Harold Klum. And that bid comes in at just over one point one million dollars. And that will be for the total fire alarm system and the parts, parts and installation. Are there any questions on that?
No.
Thank you.
Now, this work will commence the finalization of this work, Linda, once we accept the bid, they start the work, when?
They will start the work right away, probably about December, and it will go through the end of the school year.
And wrap it up for the project. Just making sure. All right. If there's no questions, you'd motion to approve the withdrawal of the one bid and the acceptance of the new bid? Mark or John, Mark, all those in second, all those in favor, I'm sorry. Approved. Last, we have the snow removal bid for twenty-two, twenty-three. Any questions or comments on that? Pretty straightforward. Need a motion to approve that bid? Mark, second? Emily, those in favor? Approved. Moving on to committee reports, we'll start with Marissa.
Just a brief update, we are going to be conducting our director of people personnel services interviews on Wednesday, October nineteenth. And we have reached out to candidates and made interview time slots. We're looking to interview for a full day, beginning a little after eight AM and going right until five PM.
That was, I think, Emily, you might be available from part of the day or?
I don't hear anything.
No?
My offer, so I don't know. Yes.
What's that?
We would like board representation if possible.
What's the timing on the?
It would be all day.
You do a partial?
First interviews start at eight thirty and then they would go through probably right about four thirty.
So I think I'll speak for myself, but it's hard to do full day. I can do a partial day and or, you know, chunks, you know, throughout other days. I think it's hard to commit to a full day.
Understood.
If you'd like to do a partial day, we would be very happy to have you on the committee. Thank you, Emily.
Want to reach out to Emily? What was your availability going to be that day in the mornings?
The preferable in the afternoon. Okay. Whatever, whatever works better, you can. I'll reach out to you and then we can figure out a schedule from there.
Thank you, Emily, appreciate it. Anything else, Marissa?
That's it for today.
Linda?
The finance and audit committee met to review the financial statements. I won't go over that again.
Okay, thank you. Right.
Sure. So our social emotional learning committee met on September fifteenth. We finalized our vision statement, which is all members of our school community will continually develop self-awareness and build genuine relationships in order to create a fun, flexible, inclusive environment where everyone feels valued and connected while learning the skills necessary to succeed. And then we had a discussion and finalized our committee focus areas for this school year. And we we chose three of them. So the first one is going to be having a social emotional learning needs assessment for staff and students, continuing professional development in the area of SEL. And then looking at SEL curriculum and possibly adopting a curriculum for the district. We had some some discussions around professional development. And, you know, I think a great thing is where, you know, everyone, every committee that I'm on, people are always talking about what professional development they can, we can offer for people to continue to grow. So we talked about, you know, making sure that we're balancing that, providing professional development in social emotional learning, but also the other areas that we need.
Any questions for Roy? Thank you for getting that committee together. And I think, you know, Mr. Sanders, I talked about, as things develop in terms of your mission statement and getting the group together to get some parent involvement, if you can? Now, is this something that would be a board committee at all, anything the board members? Participate?
Welcome, welcome to.
Maybe as things again, as things progress.
I can send out all our dates and see.
Okay. Because it's in the afternoon, which is good, standing in front of the school. Thank you, Roy. And Mr. Simmons?
Just briefly, this is a new item. It's not a committee, but it's an event we're planning last summer. Particularly in talking with some of the parents who contacted me after the Uvalde, Texas, school shooting. Talk with Mark Adam about the idea of and some of our administrators and law enforcement officers about having a virtual community forum, just to discuss with our community what our district does regarding school safety. Both of our SROs have agreed to assist me with that. Craig Canton from Questar Bosse, who coordinates the regional school safety group, along with a couple of our administrators and central office team. We are putting together a program which will include a about a forty-five minute presentation of various topics with each of us taking one of those topics. And then a question and answer session. It'll be available to anybody in the community through YouTube. And the panel that we pulled together will be part of a Zoom. It's a week from tonight. And I believe the time is six o'clock or six thirty, but it was rolled out today on Parents Square, I know that. So we'll send six thirty, six thirty. So we had a planning meeting today. I think it's coming together nicely. It's really to give parents a general awareness who may not be realize what our school district does in terms of practices, in terms of policies, in terms of drills, in terms of procedures, in terms of the infrastructure that the board is invested in. Not necessarily to give all the specifics of the details, because we don't put that information out in the public, but just to give them general assurances of the work that we do on an ongoing basis to promote safety and then some tips in terms of how they can support our efforts with their kids. In terms of, for example, letting us know what's happening and being vigilant about reporting. It's some of the new technologies that we have available through Questar, through the grant we're going to be talking about as well. Right. So it's a similar type of forum than what we had during COVID, but focused on school safety. And obviously, it's a topic that's on the mind of every educator and every parent right now.
So there's no in-person attendance alone?
It's all being done, it's all being done through the stream. It's not an, it's not an in-person event.
Wouldn't we like to do that, Mark? What do you think?
I mean, I, I like the idea and just, you know, why are we not doing it in person?
We found the attendance of some of our parent, some of the, some of our parent workshops that we did on mental health and some other topics. The attendance was much better when we, when people could just participate from home as opposed to having to come to the event. We certainly would be open to in-person workshops in the future, but we found that some of our parent workshops, the parents like it. And we wanted to maximize their participation.
Maybe you can throw that out there as a a suggestion, would you like to see future opportunities?
Or do both, you know, often. Use the big school Columbia, the auditorium and, you know, stream it, YouTube it as well. And just again, you know, give people that option of, and let's try to get back to doing things.
This is more of a panel format that lends itself better.
It's like a TV show.
What you're, what you're talking about, Mark, is more of a presentation. And we certainly will be doing other things, but this is more of a panel. Straight presentation and then the question and answers being submitted and responded. I certainly agree with the idea of an interactive, you know, in-person format as well. This is something we're trying for the first time, as far as the the school safety topic, but we certainly are open to. It's not as though we're moving away from in-person. It's just.
No, I agree with the concept. I, you know, I think it's a, a good topic. I just, you know, would like to see it also in person, allow people to sit there and watch it and, you know, ask questions as well. So.
I think that being that this is a panel discussion, like you said, and framing it, maybe as we move this forward, based on the input, the amount of attendance, the amount of people and what the the results of the panel, then we can develop a a more solid program based on the information to actually put together. I think I applaud you doing this in the sense that one of the things that plagues us is not having a consistent message when things happen. And so at least we're giving the people opportunity. And by having it on YouTube, it's also a reference point that we that people can do some research and read to. So I think maybe it will lead to a better conversation as we move this school year forward.
Thank you. And any other questions from Mr. Simmons? Okay. Thank you for those committee reports, table motions, we have enough this time. All business, the term, just just to follow up, Parent Square came up a couple of times this evening. And I know it's a newer initiative, the district is under, can you kind of give me a sense of how things are going with that?
Mark, I think left.
Peter or others?
Yeah, I can talk in general. I think the participation of the parents is very high right now. I don't have the data at my fingertips, but I know Mark has been monitoring the the participation and it's very, very high. The participation on the faculty and staff has been very, very high. People tend to like it, people, people are engaging with it. Mark did me the report about two weeks ago about what's in trade I can share with the board. Yeah, it's, it's going very, very well.
Principals comments, anything? Like it?
Yeah, I think it's just a much more diverse product. Last year on School Messenger, if I, I don't think I was, I told my parents about, it went out to all right. But plus seventy-three, now it goes as intricate as plus seventy-three PM run, I can just.
Oh, good.
Know those parents. School Messenger, the prior product, I could be on fifth grade, now I could be fifth grade in Mr. Miller's class if I just needed to talk to both parents. There's a lot of options on it and I think our teachers are gaining speed a bit and sometimes they're popping little videos, we get Fire Safety Day last week at Red Mill and it's nice to just pop up with some pictures of our kids on fire trucks. It seems to be really user-friendly and we're just getting up to speed on that.
Good. Now, is it as if with the parents, is it both a in conjunction with email communications as well, the parents work?
Yes, email, Facebook.
Okay, okay. And more features, excellent, good here. Yeah, so maybe some information?
One of the other nice things is that unlike School Messenger, we can actually log in and see, like it tells us how many more families have opened up communications. We can see who's been active.
Oh, okay.
We have ninety-nine point nine percent of our parents that are participating, meaning they're opening and checking their text messages and emails. And it also gives me the option to see what families have not done any of it yet. So we've.
So reach out.
To kind of engage and see what the problem is or maybe it's not, you know, Mark's been great with resetting links to get parents to act. He was fine till seven.
Okay, good. Excellent.
Features that we're starting to take advantage of as staff becomes more comfortable with it. Features that we're starting to take advantage of is staff being more comfortable with it. Mark is a phenomenal trainer. He uses a lot of field operations. Pull that right online using Parents. Lots of the teachers are using sign up feature.
Oh, good, good.
And then each building, there are like Parents Square ambassadors, teachers that are
Thanks. Excellent. It's great to hear. Not have any kids in the district anymore. I don't have those communications. So I gotta check in. So thanks, everyone. All right, we'll move to that was all business. Anyone else? All business, remember? Moving on to our next item is the consent agenda. Items A through J. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Just one, I I saw that we're making approvals for appendix appendix D. And it says what clubs are active and and we're moving forward with. At some point in time, could we get some information on what is not active? And do we need to reevaluate, eliminate, or change? And moving that step over. Resuming some of that information.
I have that information, Mr.
I figured you did.
So for the high school, interact club is left unfilled. We also have the musical choral director. And then for our middle school, we have the guitar club unfilled. We also have, actually, that appears to be at the middle school. And then for the elementary school, we have Red Mill yearbook. We have several of our coding clubs not filled at the elementary level. And then we have two AV directors that are not filled. So we had actually spoken with our EGTA leadership team. And we are going to be reconvening the appendix D committee to discuss the clubs that are unfilled. And then the potential to talk about some clubs that might have some interests that are new. So I can report on that at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question on the library materials. I noticed the list, we're we're weeding them out, right? And there's a criteria, there's four different reasons why a book can be weeded out. However, when you look at the list of books that are included, it seems that most fall under outdated. And it doesn't really, I feel like, capture what criteria this falls under. So there is a few books that say damaged. So that's an indication that the book was physically damaged. The outdated, though, I think that it would be more helpful next time if if we could take those four criteria. How accurate the content or information is, the condition of the material, the age of the material, or the history of the item and how often it's used. So if we could maybe have a list that then, you know, says criteria one, two, three, or four, or some acronym related to that, it might give us a better idea. For instance, Chica Chica Boom Boom is says it's outdated. I think that that's still a very relevant. So I don't know, maybe it's just not being used by the kids or some other reason, but I think that that might be more helpful in understanding. Another example would be hair water.
Okay. So maybe we can have the process kind of
Yeah, we can work, we can work with the
Roll down and see.
I think being more specific about why they're outdated or why they're what they're what they're
There are
The cover letter says there's a four criteria on why a book gets removed. So I'm just saying outdated doesn't really give an indication of.
Which was why that was chosen.
Criteria met exactly.
Because we have been doing a lot of material weeding in the libraries, right?
And also what happens to these books that are weeded out? What what do we do with them?
I'll have to work with the librarians. And I think in some cases they're donated depending on the condition.
Thanks.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? All right, see no more questions. Need a motion to approve my consent. John, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. See, next item, no end andums. New business board members, anything? So I just want to bring up, there's been a lot of conversations around the golf field trips. And can we get kind of an update where we are in terms of the field trips?
Sure. So middle school prior to COVID had historically sponsored sixth grade field trip, the seventh grade field trip, and an eighth grade field trip. The eighth grade and the seventh grade trip was generally an overnight trip to Washington DC and Philadelphia, respectively. Those trips had been conducted for a number of years. Over the years, prior to COVID, a couple of years prior to COVID, there were some challenges that emerged regarding the trips that may not have been in place when they first occurred. One of those was costs of the trip and some other factors. So we saw prior to COVID more kids not going on the trip and more families not providing permission for the kids to go on the trip. And so looking at what those issues might be that were contributing to that, to how that falls out, it became a little bit of a concern that, you know, maybe we look and reevaluate those trips from the building level. They're coming off of COVID now. There is a sense that the board would like this to be promoted and reviewed. So we have been reviewing it. Mrs. Barker, Mr. Newman, Ms. Hoffman have been working with Linda and Roy on whether or not a Washington DC trip for the eighth graders would be feasible. Right now, the total cost of the trip, if all the students went, is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is that correct, Linda?
For about two hundred and sixty students.
About two hundred and sixty students. And that falling across, if all the kids were go, that cost is more than five hundred dollars per kid. Is that correct?
Yes, the hundred and forty three thousand is two hundred and sixty students at five fifty a trip.
That's it. So that is a expense. We recently looked at the monies that were available within the extra classroom accounts. Those monies include monies that have been accrued or accumulated over the different years because of the the fact that you have to collect money, there's fundraising that goes on, you have to pay pretty significant deposit. And then once the trip concludes, those monies are kept in a balance to provide the deposit the next time. The total of those monies, let my slip with me, but the totals of those monies, taking the eighth grade trip, the seventh grade trip, and the sixth grade trip is approximately
Just over thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars. So that money has not yet been applied. If we if we apply that money to one trip as opposed to splitting it among the three trips, which is an idea that I'd like some input on. I talked to Linda about it brings the cost down, not very significantly, but it does bring the cost down. I'm talking about taking the thirty thousand dollars and saying, let's take that money. Let's focus on the Washington DC trip first. Let's see what that does to the cost per student.
Yes, if we were to use the, all of the thirty thousand dollars towards the eighth grade field trip, so that would be combining all of that money. It would be approximately four hundred and thirty five dollars per student if we were to just use that money. That does not leave, however, any money in the accounts if these field trips go on for next year. So it's something to consider. So you know, we did talk about what if we were to leave approximately fifteen thousand dollars in those accounts. So however it's allocated, possibly five thousand a grade level. If we were to do that. And then if the, you know, there was talk about, these are educational field trips and what is the district's responsibility in that? So we did talk about the possibility of the district contributing towards these field trips for this year.
Let me speak to that.
Okay.
So I looked at your field trip policy because I have have given some thought to the idea that while these district trips have historically been paid for through contributions of the parents and fundraising. The field trip policy, which is a good policy, indicates that no child should be denied an opportunity to go on an educational field trip due to costs. And as these costs have been going up, and it is fairly prohibitive for 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 a family to fund a five hundred dollar per person trip. Policy says that field trips are supposed to be educational. This is certainly going to Washington DC as an educational experience for the students. I would ask the board to consider weighing the possibility that some of the costs further be deferred from the parents and the students by having the district pay for some of it. Don't know what that sum of it would be. Yeah, because there is an opportunity still to go to Washington because the building principal and assistant principals have contacted Yankee Trails. The dilemma here is that you got to get a deposit in by early next week at the latest. Really, it was Friday and we asked for an extension. So I'd like to basically kind of frame this issue is things have changed a little bit in terms of the affordability of these trips. I think that's the first hurdle we'd have to get through is making the trip affordable. Then we can deal with the other stuff. The other thing about the field trip is it used to be that almost all the kids would go. Now you have greater numbers of kids whose parents are saying they're not providing permission for them to go, or they either because they can't afford it, or they simply don't support their kids going away. The effect of that is you have the chaperone needs. So you're pulling some of the faculty and staff out of the building to go on the trip. And you still have larger percentages of that eighth grade class or seventh grade class, whatever it be in school needing to receive supervision and have a program. I think the more you can do to to get the cost down, the more likely it would be that more kids would go. And then you would have less concern about the the supervision back in the building. That doesn't mean that a hundred percent of the kids would go. So I think the idea of the district contributing to this is consistent with your policy. I think it recognizes the fact that this is an educational program. It's similar to the playgrounds. Playgrounds used to be in the district funded fully by the PTOs. I don't, I don't subscribe to that. And if it is truly an educational program, then all of the kids should have fair access to be able to go. And I don't think that this, the fundraising is not a bad idea. But my my sense is historically, and I'm just being open about it, that a lot of management is involved in tracking that fundraising. And as the costs continue to go up and kids need to raise more money, we want our administrators and our staff focused on instruction at Goff Middle School. We don't necessarily want them distracted in doing a lot of fundraising. So I think for lots of good reasons, even though this may be an expense to the district, it's worth considering letting, at least for this year, because this is right after COVID, and we can figure out maybe a better formula next year. Let's have, let's have the district offset the cost of this trip in some way so that we stand a better chance of it being what it once was, which was the whole class going. Doesn't mean we're going to guarantee that. So those are my ideas. That has helped me frame my ideas on that. There is still an opportunity. Jill, what's the deadline?
Next Wednesday.
Roy has some survey that he put together with the building principals and assistant principals. But we didn't put that survey out because if we're going to contribute to the cost or bring the cost down, we didn't want to put out a survey and say the trip is going to cost five hundred dollars. And the Boston would only cost a hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty. I wanted the board to weigh in on this.
Okay. Very good. Any, any thoughts come to mind based on the conversation?
I think we need to be consistent where the board supports field trips.
Yep.
Whether it's at the high school, the middle school, the elementary schools. We've always supported the field trips. I just want to make sure we're consistent throughout the district with with our decisions. And if we're going to support field trips, we support all field trips. If we're not going to support field trips, then we don't support any field trips. You know, we have to be consistent. Because the 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 basis that we're we're talking about, you know, you could say that or you know, well, my kid doesn't play sports because I can't afford to buy him stuff. Or, you know, my kid doesn't do this club because I can't afford it. So I just want us to be cautious that, you know, if we're going to support, we need to support and not just pick and choose what we're going to support.
I've given that some thought, Mark.
And and, you know, ask parents. We may be surprised. Parents may say, yeah, I I want my my child to go. What am I to check out to? We haven't asked. Whether it's the high school, the middle school, the elementary school, if we don't ask, we don't know. So
I think you get a different answer, though, when you ask, when you put out it's a five hundred dollar trip versus it's a two hundred dollar trip.
All right.
Anyone else?
Just a couple of thoughts. What does the, what is the community want?
We don't know. That's why we wanted to do the survey. We only know that there was a small group of parents that came to a PTO meeting in which the trip was discussed. Were upset of the idea that the Washington trip was going to be canceled. We don't really know what all of the parents feel at Goff Middle School about this because we haven't been given them an opportunity to weigh in on it. And that's why we came up with the idea of the survey, so we get a better sense of what the percentage of parents that would say yes, like Mark is saying, would go versus versus, you know, just a small group who had an opportunity to attend that meeting.
I I concur with some of Mark's comments that consistency in policy is really important as we move this forward. And I'm supportive of educational trips. I think it's a really good thing, whether any greater. I I I think it gives students an opportunity to see things from a different perspective. So I think we should explore that for the future and maybe explore a way that as we move past this, not using this trip specifically, but finding ways to get the community to respond and participate in what we're doing here. It goes back to the forum, the roundtable, the panel discussion you're having. One of the problems and challenges we face in the district is is getting people engaged, getting people to comment, whether it's virtually or in person, and making the school a centerpin of activity and giving them an opportunity to give us their opinion. I think that's where we struggle with with in the engagement piece. So as we move this forward, I would like to see that types of stuff explored, like how can we get better participation? I also believe that even though fundraising is is problematic and and it does have its issues, but it's a really great way to teach kids to have skin in the game and families. I'm not saying that they have to raise all the money, but if you create an event for something, it gets people an opportunity to really be supportive of what you're doing. And not just for field trips, but for other school activities. And maybe challenge and reengage the the PTOs and and Education Foundation. There's a lot of isolated groups out there that we could be pulling to try to reignite what COVID has taken from us. And I think that's the challenge that this board is facing with these issues is how do we get people back involved?
I agree with what you and Mark are both saying about the value of the field trips and being consistent and about participation. The the challenge here is that no amount of fundraising is going to be able to occur to give us a guarantee that we could fully fund that hundred and forty thousand dollars because the deposit is due Wednesday. So if we make a deposit, it's, I understand it is not not a refundable deposit, is it? Or
How much is it?
So you've got to, you've got, you've got the hotel rooms. You've got whatever the activities are that they're doing down there that have certain fees associated with them. So there's kind of a long-term conversation that we're having about philosophically supporting field trips. There's the short-term thing that we have to deal with right now is if we're going to Washington DC with the eighth graders, we need to put a deposit down on Wednesday. And that deposit has to make an assumption, I believe, and Jill, give me some feedback on this, that all two hundred and And that deposit has to make an assumption, I believe, and Jill, give me some feedback on this, that all 260 kids would be going in order to book all of the rooms, all the tickets and all of those kinds of things. We have to make an assumption that 260 kids are going to go on that trip.
Well, I, I agree. I was, my conversation was as we go past this. I'm, I'm not prepared. I don't have enough information to make an assessment based on spending that kind of money and that 260 kids. I mean, if we've missed an opportunity, then we have to own that. And, and we have to say that, you know, this will help for whatever the reason, I even love digging into that, but how do we move forward here? So if we miss this opportunity, what are we going to do to make it up, to get them something? And that's, that's where we, I mean, that's basically an estimation because on one hand, I don't want to spend allocate all this money and not have the participation because it's, we're behind the eight ball. So that's the kind of an assessment that you guys have to figure out between
So I think the survey would help us to do that though. The survey puts the price, the cost down. It doesn't necessarily, I don't know, Roy has the survey, but it doesn't necessarily bind you to to, you know, that that would be the final cost. You could say in the survey that the estimated cost right now, setting aside the fundraising or district contribution for the trip is $500 per tip. Is that correct?
That's correct. So when we were trying to make a decision, remember at the beginning of this year, we were going to make a decision about, you know, we're not knowing how COVID was going to play out with the, the fact that keeping field trips, the cost may be very, very high, which it is compared to a few years ago. And so with that being said, we said, we, we, we didn't you know, hold the deposit or lose it all. So we did not know, you know, how this was going to play out in terms of the impact of COVID and taking kids to Washington, the cost impacting families. We decided that our safest bet and make it a inclusive trip was to put together a hospital for this year with keeping Washington for next year and as we had a better deal for on, you know, have more time to fundraise, have more time to snow, COVID play out, we had to pay for Washington and get sent. What we do, having extra room. So there's so many factors that we have to kind of play out and figure out what is our best, safest solution for our student body and how can we best make it an inclusive trip and care to all of our families. We've had each year, we've gone to Washington over 20%. Each year that number increased, the kids staying back as you did at 3:35 in 2019, families were at 4:00 or 4:00 yet. In addition to that, we have families who didn't feel comfortable letting their kids go overnight, which means in a hotel room. So there's, there's a whole, there's a lot of, of interest and feelings about the trip. So we tried to make the best possible decision based on the best interest for all the student body that back in the time. But we're not, certainly want to see Washington come back. We might think work point is not having more time to fundraise, no time to plan. But certainly to pull it off this year as well, we can make sure that families, that people are being spared unless by the survey, I thought would exhibit a, if we have a large percentage of families saying, yeah, $500, we'll hold forward with it. We're not sure about what percentage of people would say, no, I'd rather not do that. So that's all the discussion we're having right now. We do want to So we're certainly willing and willing to do the work to make Washington happen, so it's like, that's all of our students and families.
One other point I wanted to make regarding inconsistency, and I don't know whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. I think it has some merit. When you talk about district funding the field trips, historically, a lot of the field trips have been paid for by parents or volunteer fundraising or, or PTOs or partially paid by the district, partially paid for by the PTOs or groups. One thing that's different about an eighth grade trip is it's the last year in middle school. So you could come up with a criteria and say, we, the district will support certain trips that are the whole, all the grade level goes. And it's a transition year. So you've got fifth grade, you've got eighth grade, you've got senior year. So maybe you apply a different criteria to those three trips where the district maybe kicks in more to be able to make sure that it is seen as not only an educational field trip, but also a celebration of those transition years as kids are all the way. That wouldn't bind the district to pay for every single field trip, but it would give you a consistent criteria. It's just another talk that I had over.
I mean, I think that's where, I mean, I, my thoughts are, if anyone else wants to weigh in too, please feel free. You, you got to do the survey. I don't want the survey questions to trigger responses based on cost. I want trigger, I want to see responses based on interest. If, if there's question, if there's a cost sharing questionnaire, I'd like to see what you're, kind of how you're phrasing things. I would like to see them, how many students and families would like to go? Period. How many students would, families can, can do a cost sharing piece? If there's fundraising involved, would you be involved? You know, so I guess I have to see the survey. The other thing is, we do have the deposit, the monies and some of the funds. You know, we, we spent a ton of money on student engagement using our federal funds. And I don't know if there's some things available there because I think that is, this is a perfect example of kids learning about democracy and actually going to Washington DC to see what's going on. They were learning. And all my kids went on the trip. They had a great time. They learned a lot. Especially to, as a, as a kind of a civic and community engagement trip. This has high value. And I think it does. And I think if we can get through using some federal funds, some district funds and fundraisers, I like the skin in the game. I always like that. People have some responsibility, but let's, let's make sure most of our families are like, do we want to do DC? If we do, we get 90%, people want to go, then we have to make some decisions on costs and, and funding. And then what are they willing to, to, to help out with? If there's no cost to the family, I'm sure you'll get 100% or close to it on participation.
So right now I'll have Roy share the survey and we, we tried to make it an information tool, but also try to get some information back. So it does mention the cost being $500. And it does mention the two trips, Washington DC and Boston as options that are under consideration right now at different price points. The survey could be modified certainly to do what you're suggesting, like and again, the cost of the trip right now is $500 per kid. You can design the questions to say, in the event that, that, in, 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 in the event that you know, that cost could be brought down, would you be willing to have your child go? Are you willing to participate? And, and contribute and support the fundraising activities and kind of modify it that way. The only concern I have about going in that direction is I don't know off the top of my head, maybe Linda or Jill knows, how much money is due Wednesday? Do we know the dollar amount? So they, the cost, the deposit is only for the hotel rooms right now? Okay. So it's, and it's not the full cost of the hotel rooms? It's a full cost or just a deposit on each room?
It's, 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 it's the, the deposit is for the hotel room only. She still has to pass out tickets. She still has to pass out.
Okay. Well, if we can get the dollar amount on the deposit.
Get some data for us.
Maybe we, maybe we take care of the deposit.
No, it's okay. I mean, the numbers.
I don't have the cost on the hotel rooms. They just have the cost on the total trip, which includes the hotel room. So, so what we could do, we could look at if we needed to get a deposit to them, taking care of it through the district right now. If, if we needed to do a quick deposit, we could certainly, if this is something that the board is interested in doing, we could certainly look at the district taking care of the deposit.
I, I want to see what the interest is. I think, you know, timing wise in the survey is important. So if we can get that out quickly and then funding options, we can talk about that as a board. Give us some options on the funding piece, district doing the deposit, using funds that currently exist. The next question.
The concern is the timing of losing the money though. You know, you're going to lose money.
Well, I mean, I don't want to debate it, but I guess we'll, we'll figure it out. But I think from a general support, we want to move forward with planning this opportunity for our students.
Right. I think we planned on getting the survey out tomorrow or by Friday at least, and, and then having results back within a week so that we could then make a decision. But we do still have the issue. We do still have the issues of the deposit.
By Wednesday.
Yes. I think we would need results and a decent show of interest definitely by Monday end of business.
So we would like to get the survey out tomorrow and then we would close the survey the end of the day on Monday, which would then give us Tuesday to really look at it. Now with the survey being Google form, we're able to see, we don't have to wait until it closes to see how results are coming in.
Okay, that's good.
We also talked about having the survey available at the open house, which is when? Okay. So we could even have it available then. We could have some Chromebooks set up. We could have paper format so that we could at least get eighth grade families as they're coming in.
Just do a QR code, you snap it with your camera and you do it on your phone and you're done.
And it will, it can go out through Parents Square. I mean, there's, there's easy ways to get it out, but we want to get as much input as possible.
How many questions, Roy?
Uh, 10. It's, it's
Pretty simple. Yeah, good. Right.
Mark had a question.
No, just let's get the survey out, but let's get the information out to the parents to say, go take the survey. So, you know, whether it's, it's tomorrow night at, at the open house or, or Parents Square or, you know, whatever other means we have available, you know, that Mark Adam can put with the other social media things that we have to say, hey, it's out there. You know, please, please, uh, allow, you know.
So how do we authorize spending the money? We don't have a meeting.
Well, well.
So you know, you know, you know, when driving.
Well, I think we're going to have to figure out a plan to make the deposit. I don't know how, how we're going to do that. We're going to have to talk internally about how we're going to do that.
Let us know.
And I don't know what that, I don't know what that dollar.
No, I, I understand that. What I'm saying is I'm, me personally, I'm not comfortable making that decision in three days. You know, I don't like being in this position. Right now I'm spending this kind of money without the preparation and, and the information. So what I'm saying is if it can't happen, I would rather have it not happen than have it, than have it happen poorly to, to try, to, to try to put a, a round peg in a square hole at this point. Let's identify what went down, how it went down, and then make sure that it doesn't happen again. So I'm, I'm looking at it at two levels because I don't like coming to a meeting and having to make $140,000 decision without another meeting.
Wouldn't be $140,000.
Well, but ultimately it is if we have to pay for it. No, I'm talking about if we have to pay for the whole trip. It's, 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 it's a big expense. You know what I mean? So I, I, I just want to make sure that in our correspondence after the survey that we tackled this and I'm going to be off the radar for the next 14 days. So
Well, we'll communicate the survey results to the board. And then we'll, we'll, let's take that step and then we'll take it from there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Any other comments, board members? Nope. Okay. Public forum number two. Anyone in the public want to speak? Nope. Okay. Board forum? Cheryl, Johnny, John, good, Mark. Jennifer, Emily, good. So we do have need for executive session for purposes of personnel and contract negotiations, conversations. We don't expect any business after the board meeting. That's correct. That's executive session, I should say. So with that, have a great night. Thank you for hosting, Mr. Alvey. And I need a motion to move into executive session. Emily, second. John, all those in favor? Sure. Thank you. Have a great night.